And again, we welcome again Beth Downey, Coordinator of Career and Technical Education Office. So, thank you both for being here. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Britt for a summary of your report to us.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Madam Chairman, members of the School Board and FCPS Leadership Team, it is my distinct honor to be here with you this evening representing the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. Before beginning my remarks, I'd like to acknowledge the members of the committee who are present with us this evening, Mr. Jim McCormick and John Whitman, if they would stand.[34.54][34.54](APPLAUSE). I would be remiss not to thank them for their service to the committee and the public school and the school district, as well as express my appreciation for them coming out this evening to support me. Thank you.[49.21][49.21](LAUGHING). During the 2016-17 school year, I had the privilege of serving as committee chair, working with the dedicated community and industry members to fulfill the board's charge and produce an annual report with a synopsis of the committee's activities and list of key recommendations for the board's consideration. During the past eight months, the committee received briefings on current, as well as proposed, future CTE programs and course offerings, examined recently published workforce trend data associated with the STEM, Health and Medical Sciences, and Information Technology career clusters. The committee is pleased to report that the county's existing curriculum and program areas associated with the aforementioned career clusters are in direct alignment with the recent reports published by both regionally recognized authorities on workforce and education trends, including the George Mason University Center for Regional Analysis and the Georgetown Center on Education and Workforce. Leadership and staff within ISD and the CTE Department continue to adapt and expand courses and programs and areas these reports predict will all grow more than 30% over the next five years. And those fields or careers include software developers, medical assistants, health informatics, and cybersecurity. Through collaboration and partnerships with companies such as Inova, Capital One, Northrop Grumman, the CTE Department has been able to provide FCPS students with courses, after-school programming, and work-based learning experiences where students at both the middle and high school level are gaining valuable skills in coding, patient assistance interaction, big data, and network security. It's important to note, the committee readily recognized the interdependence between these programs and teacher professional development, graduation requirements, and the school system budget. The recommendations in the committee's annual report signify our belief and understanding that any decreased funding, lack of action on creating new pathways to graduation, and inadequate investments in teacher training will impede the full implementation and growth of these new innovative programs that are vital to ensuring Fairfax County students are not only able to graduate, but thrive in the community because they enter college or the workforce equipped with the necessary technical, oral, and written communication and critical thinking skills. At our final meeting, should our slate of members be re-elected, should they be reconfirmed, I was re-elected Chair of the 2017-18 school year. Along with our annual report, the committee submitted our recommendation for a new charge in the next school year. I'm appreciative of your time and attention this evening, and we thank you in advance for your consideration and action on our recommendations. As long as I have an option to phone a friend, I'm happy to answer any questions any members of the board may have.[209.62][209.62](LAUGHING).
Thank you very much. That was an excellent report and very succinct. So, now I will entertain questions from board members, and I'm going to start with Mr. Moon.
Okay. I think I read this somewhere in the executive summary about your committee's recommendation to seek some sort of flexibility in graduation requirements. I mean, I fully support and, of course, agree with that position, that recommendation.
Yes.
It's not just for the CTEAC, but other courses. And also in terms of how students are permitted to get their credits, whether they have to sit for 990 hours to get a credit versus if they can, you know, attain certain competency level standards, whether, you know, they are, they should be allowed to get credits and be able to use other time to, you know, do something else, including internships and et cetera.
Correct.
So, with that in mind, and I, you probably know about this already, but there will be a public hearing before the State Board of Education of Luther Jackson on June 27, starting at 6:30. I think each speaker is given three minutes to speak, but you may need to sign up in advance. I think there may be a great opportunity for your, for your advisory committee to make the same pitch to the people who may be setting these rules.
Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
I guess, as my other question is, I am assuming that FCPS, that we will also be presenting testimony at that time? Do we know?
That would be a question, I think, for Dr. Lockard or Ursula. I think that'd be a question for either Dr. Lockard or Ursula, and I don't know the answer to that.
That's at the, at the hearing before the Virginia Board of Education. Okay. I don't know if Dr. Ursula.
So, we are, we obviously are aware of the meeting, and we do have some folks that are going to provide testimony, but Dr. Grant and I discussed the need to actually come up with a plan in terms of who might actually misrepresent FCPS as a whole, and we need to talk to Dr. Lockard about that. We just haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Okay. But we are planning to, because it would be, this is, as Mr. Moon said, is, is an excellent opportunity to continue to push our desire for changes in high school graduation. And I was, I guess I was going to ask whether or not you have any indication as to what the State Board is thinking of, because that was in the Innovation Committee and, you know, being able to get credit for computer science and some of the other CTE courses to satisfy for either math or laboratory science. Do we have any idea how that's going?
I just turned myself off. We have received some, some feedback and some updates. The final presentation and the final release is slated right now for, I believe, December of 2017. So, until that finally comes out, we're following it very closely and in close contact with Michael Malloy, but we do not have any final indication as of yet. Slowly may have more information.
Well, I was just going to say, as a reminder, we actually have a work session with the board.
Right.
Where we're going to discuss our graduation requirements and pathways on Monday. So, we'll have an opportunity to, to provide more updates on the timeline then.
Okay. Great. Because I think we all believe strongly that the state needs to change how they do this, that there are, our students are missing opportunities. I guess the other question that I would have is, and I don't know, you may not be able to answer this tonight. In terms of enrollment and, and choices that students are, are making, what, what are the trends in the most popular courses that kids are signing up for? And I know that every year, there are courses that are dropped for lack of interest. So, kind of what is the trend right now in CTE from the student's perspective?
We currently don't have any courses that are slated to be dropped for lack of enrollment. We actually are maxed out in most of our courses now at our academies. I don't have information on base school course offerings at this point, but in our academy offerings, we are, we are full.
Great.
In almost every offering, we have the largest enrollment that we've had in several years in HVC and Electrical, Animal Science, Cosmetology. So, we, we have very full enrollment, lot of interest in our programs.
That's wonderful. Then the other question is transportation, because that's always, how are we doing, good or bad, in terms of transportation to the academies?
I think we're staying the course, as we have in past years. We are looking for as much flexibility as we can. It is a challenge. We, we adjusted our, our academy schedules a little bit again this year to try to accommodate transportation a little better. We are limited in when we can leave base schools and when we have to get them back in order for buses to be available. Transportation has been very flexible with us for our licensed practical nursing, our cosmetology, and our firefighting specialty programs in order to try to accommodate those students as best we can. We did open a new academy registration system this year that I think was very helpful and got rave reviews from the, the counseling staffs for its ease. But as part of that, there was, we incorporated a drop-down menu that showed when transportation for each class was available, and we also, excuse me, on our intranet site had by school and electronic, that you could look up by your base school where you went and when transportation was available. So, I think those two features really enhance the ability to make, of awareness for the counseling staff and the students.
That's great. And then the last question is, I know that we do allow students to transfer to an academy school full-time if there is sufficient interest. And I guess, so how much, how much transferring into an academy school full-time so that students can take advantage of, of more of those programs as juniors and seniors?
I don't have exact figures. It is minimal, but I don't have exact figures. Typically, we find for most students, by the time they begin to access an academy program in the 11th grade, they don't want to leave their base school.
Okay.
Because they're vested in their after-school programs and in their sports activities and their friends, so they just typically transport. But we do occasionally have a few students who will do that, but I don't have exact numbers.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. Well, I'm pleased to hear that the courses are full.
Yeah.
The academies are doing well. That's excellent. And I must, I must tell you, we're getting ready for Cappy's and Chris Johnson, our very, very talented orchestra leader, composer, what have you, is, is getting ready with his orchestra. And he is amazing and does a wonderful, wonderful job at Fairfax Academy. So, we're very proud of him. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Corbin Sanders?
(Cough) Excuse me. Thank you. I had the opportunity with Mr. Moon to tour the Governor's Health Sciences Academy at West Potomac with Senator Kane a couple of weeks ago, and I should let you know that he was wowed. Was just so impressed. And I ran into him subsequent to that, and he came up and he said, "I've never seen anything like it." It was just incredible, and he's talking to everybody on Capitol Hill. I did ask if he could send us some money.[692.63][692.63](LAUGHING). Just keep current funding, we're good. Just keep current funding.[697.32][697.32](LAUGHING). But that kind of gets me to my next question, which is, you know, we talked a little bit about what the flexibility we need from the state. It would be really helpful to know not only the flexibility as far as the programming and how it slots into graduation requirements, which I look forward to hearing about on Monday, but it would also be helpful to better understand the economics of if these careers are growing at 30% in the next five years, then that means we should be investing in these careers. And so, what is the cost that we need to invest? You know, what do we need to budget? And then along the same lines with the, this is the growth workforce development, what do we need to do earlier on to educate our students and families about the opportunities of CTE and our academy programs so they actually leave room in their education plans? Because what I often hear is, "Ah, I wish I had known." So, when is the time we should start that conversation with families?
Research varies on that. We, we have begun to start with our Naviance program in some of our sixth-grade schools and are rolling more of those schools on. A lot of our schools do career fairs and career opportunities for students. We have, as you are aware, we have a huge STEAM initiative for our math, science, engineering, coding classes that we have really begun to expand and, and target certain populations in certain areas of the county, as well as across the county. We started four years ago with about 10 STEAM schools, and we're up over 70 now that have STEAM-focused labs within their buildings or areas within their buildings to encourage students in math and science and engineering. So, the sixth, the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade level is optimal to begin to have those conversations and work with the students. The academic plan is just now beginning to roll out, so it will be a few years till we can, till we can really see the impact of how that is. And that's the thing, I think, that's really hard when you're, when you're targeting younger students with, they, to see, you want immediate results, but you're not going to see those immediate results for several years because they have to go through that process. But I do think that we are, we are seeing an increase in our classes and enrollments in our classes. So, I do think that the education that we're doing and the promotion that we're doing is, is working.
When we talked to the folks from Fate, I asked, "What do you need us to do?" I'm asking the same question from you. I mean, do we need to promote this through our newsletters? Do we need to do more when we go talk to PTAs? Should we also be describing some of our CTE programs in Spanish so that the parents of English language learners know about these opportunities?
We do have our opportunities and information about all of our programs and available in all of our languages. We've had them translated. So, there's, there's promotional information available for, for all of our students. I think from the CTE perspective, because I'll speak and I'll let Charles speak from the committee perspective, but from the CTE perspective, continue doing what you're doing, talking about the programs, promoting the programs. We have lots of messages going out, lots of messaging going out in the news you choose and videos. We've been working with Department of Communications and getting things out. It's, it's a matter of people really becoming aware and saturating the market over and over again, because you see things and you read things, but you don't necessarily internalize them right away. So, I think just continuing the support that you've given our programs is.
If I could add one, one comment, and Chairman Evans had invited me up to the table, and I declined. I think I should have gone up now that I'm speaking the whole time.
Me too.[962.82][962.82](LAUGHING).
No, I'm, I'm fine here. But one thing I think that many of the board members already do, but could continue to do, which would be really helpful, is to continue to help us with the business partnerships and the industry partnerships, because it's really, really difficult for us to form those relationships on our own. And when we've got the opportunity to use some of the folks that have connections in the community to help us with opportunities, to identify internship opportunities, job shadowing opportunities for students, those are the kinds of things when we can show students what the coursework that they're taking in school looks like in the real world of work, that's where I think we see some of the biggest benefits. And coming, you know, I've been here five years now, but the jurisdiction that I came from, in the community that I came from, was so much more robust in terms of the business partnerships for placing students in career-related learning experiences in the workplace because it was a smaller jurisdiction, and the relationships were so much stronger. So, that's one of the main things that we would really, you know, ask our elected officials and board members to continue to support us with, because you've got a lot of great connections, and you're all doing a great job of that already. But if you could just continue those efforts, it would be really helpful.
Thank you, Beth.
I was going to say that I concur. He actually took what I was going to say. Really forming those business partnerships and sort of getting individuals from the workforce into the classroom to help with the speaker presentations, with opportunities for work-based learning, those are the things, sort of connecting the courses that the students are taking to the workforce. I think that's what resonates with a lot of parents and families, is what are these courses going to do if my child is interested in going to this particular college program, or also connecting their pursuit of those courses to an industry or a position or job or career that their students could have, making sure that that's plain and clear. And oftentimes, having those business partnerships helps make that point.
Thank you. Ms. Darnett Kopeck.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Britt, and board members and staff for, for all that you do in this area. It is one, as, as witnessed by the full classes and, and growing courses that we're offering, something that's exciting and needed and just adds so much to our curriculum. So, thank you so much. I, I had a question on your number two recommendation. Can you just tell me a little bit more about what you're thinking, what the committee's thinking was about developing and expanding a multimedia communications plan for pathways to graduation?
When we initially, I know that since I've been on the committee the last three or four years, I know there's been a lot of work that's been done to change the website and add additional information and make it easier for parents and students to find information about the CTE program. And I think with some of the recent changes to the website, I'm hearing that that's become a little more difficult. But the committee's thoughts on this were finding ways to, multimedia would mean like videos, websites, testimonials of students that have gone through the CTE program and can then speak to their experience of either finding work or going to college in a particular career field. We know that students are really into social media, so as much as the school system is able to leverage social media to put out messaging to students through FCPS, your Twitter, your Instagram, Facebook, whatever, you know, these platforms the district is on, ensuring that students constantly are reminded and see the value of being in these programs and those photos, those videos, and testimonials and things. We hope that, like she says, will continue to drive the point home, that when the decision is made to which courses they'll take, or if they're interested in the program, they can refer back to the information that they've received. So, just a greater investment of that would be our recommendation.
Okay. But I, thank you for that. So, that's the part of the communications plan. But were you also considering adding CTE or CTE courses on, on multimedia communication? Was that a consideration?
We, we do have webpage classes now.
Okay.
So, it wasn't a consideration. And we have TV productions, so we have those multimedia classes now. As part of our pathways plan, we will try to expand those classes somewhat to have a four-year pathway for them. But it was really more about making sure that the community is aware about our pathways to graduation initiative and the pathways that are available to students in the sequencing of courses.
Okay. All right. Thank, yeah, thank you about that. And then I guess, maybe this is a question for you, Dr. Presidio, or, but I think as we pursue, and I know we have this, I'm just not exactly sure how to access the information. As we act, as, as we hopefully make inroads with the State Board of Education, and the CTE classes, I, I hate, I do tell personal stories, because this is going to be my last year, because my daughter's graduating. But there was something that she really, really wanted to do, but it was too far away. So, I think we need to talk about the equity piece, particularly as the pathways to graduation are accepted by the state. And so, do we have, I know we do, but if you can just send it to us, if somebody can send it to us, where these things are located, particularly the single-issue type, type CTE courses, where, is if you're on one part of the county, you can't access that if you're another part of the county, which is unfortunately what my family encountered. But I'd, I'd love to know that so we can, as we talk about this, we can expand appropriately and make certain that at least there are pods or whatever of these programs at every point that's accessible for all students. And I know there's costs, you know, cost issues and all of that, but if we could have that, I would appreciate that. And if we already have that, just send to me how that, what it looks like.
Yeah. We definitely could get you information on that, and that's another topic that we might want to discuss more at the work session on Monday as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, but it's a very important point.
Yes.
So, thank you for bringing that.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Alchik?
Thank you. I have a quick question after, I really appreciate the work you've done. I spent quite a bit of time at the Marshall Academy over there with Jeff and visiting and donated our car, and so just, a big, big thank you for all the work you do. And I know transportation is a big issue. I have a question as we talk about community partnerships. I know I went, I attended the roundtable luncheon and visit they held at Marshall for community members, business communities, electeds, and the like. Does every academy do that? Do they host that kind of event?
I think the one that you're referring to is the one that was held in the fall that was sponsored by ACTE. So, that was, that was in celebration of Career and Technical Education Week in February. And so, ACTE was the organization that came in and asked Marshall to host that for, so that, that was a particular one-off event. They do hold a lot of community events where they bring, they bring business and community partnerships in. Each of the academies has their own advisory committee where they bring in their business partners and work with them, and they have open house nights and family nights and things like that.
Okay. No, that's, because that seems like a great opportunity. I know I spoke to people afterwards who'd been there as we tried to expand, you know, and support you in, in growing those business partnerships. You know, if you can let us know if we can help get the word out when those events happen, because there's nothing better than getting people right in the building to see the kids and see what's happening. So, please let us know how we can support you with that.
Okay.
Moving forward. And thank you so much.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, actually, all my questions have been answered, so I'll just say, thank you very much. I, you know, I just, I always feel like with this kind of stuff, the more we do, the better. The only problem we have is that we don't have it absolutely everywhere for every kid, right? So, we'll just keep chipping away at that. But I feel like in my time on the board, we have been doing that. We have been chipping away at it, making it more available and more popular. And the only thing I was, I guess this may be pie in the sky, but if you, you know, you have courses in media, marketing, and I assume that those students are working on particular challenges, right? Actual real-world, maybe problem-solving. So, maybe, maybe one of the real-world problems they could help us solve is getting the word out to fellow students' families about their own good stuff. So, I don't, just a thought. But thank you so much.
I want to thank you as well, and I just had a couple of things to mention. I mean, that's, to hear that our courses are all full is, is wonderful. You know, I know in, in some years past, we've said, "Oh, we got to get the word out more," you know, and now it sounds like, as Ms. Hines just said, you know, we've, we've made significant progress on that. So, I guess my follow-up, of course, you know, it's, it's always great to be a victim of your own success here. So, is, is there an opportunity here to have more of these courses in base schools? Is, is this the time to be, if we have, if they're popular enough, if there's enough critical mass at our base high schools, is there an opportunity there to expand? And I guess I'll throw that out to all of you, including Dr. Presidio and Dr. Lockard, if any of you would like to, to answer that. I see you're nodding that.
For some of the courses, it's easier than others.
All right.
And the reason being the footprint. It's very difficult to put an auto-technologies lab, a cosmetology lab, an animal science lab, because of the equipment and the size of space requirements that are needed. To expand out cybersecurity is a little bit easier because we can do that within a classroom space. So, we are looking at expanding out our information technology programs. Our engineering programs are currently in all of our high schools. We're looking at putting some more of our high-end information technology over the next several years in our base schools, particularly with cybersecurity. We plan on.
Actually, let me stop you there, because that was one of my other questions was, I see the focus on cybersecurity, and that's wonderful. Where, where are we now with that, with the cybersecurity in the high schools and the cyber patriot program with the middle schools? How, how much coverage do we have now, if you, if you know off the top of your head?
With the, with the middle schools, we started a partnership with the Education Foundation last year, and we started seven schools in the middle school cyber patriot program.
Okay.
We should expand that to 10. And we actually have a meeting with the Executive Director for the Foundation in the next couple of weeks to start to develop a plan to try to get more mentors and partnerships and sponsorships for our middle school cybersecurity program. We'd like to expand that to all 25 middle schools within the next several years.
That would be great.
We do have cyber patriot programs in, excuse me, that are tied to our academy programs. And we plan on introducing a course for, in course review. The course review process in the fall that would be implemented in the fall of 18, if approved, would be an introduction to cybersecurity class. The state is releasing that curriculum this spring.
Oh.
And so, that will give us a year to plan for that course. And so, our hope is that we will be able to train our teachers and have approval for that course to be offered as a course elective for base high schools to pick up in the fall of 18.
So, for every, every, every base high school, then?
It would be an elective program, so the, the schools would have to choose to offer that in their elective programming, but it would be an offering.
That's wonderful to hear. That's, that's really wonderful to hear. So, I, I didn't mean to stop you. You sparked that, that other question. So, are there other, other courses that come to mind that would particularly lend themselves to being in our base schools?
We have seen a growth in our criminal justice classes and base schools picking that up, up over the next several years. Again, that is a somewhat of a larger footprint classroom that needs to be taken for, in that classroom. We are expanding our EMT class. This year, we expanded it to the West Potomac Academy. We're starting a 911 class in the fall, so we hope that will expand out. So, I think the thing to understand is, the majority of our CTE students are in our base high schools now. We have marketing, business, family and consumer sciences, technology and engineering, and business and information technology in all of our high schools. The only two programs that we don't have at all in all of our high schools are trade and industrial programs. We have in some of the base high schools with our cosmetology and auto technologies, and then our health and medical programs. The footprint for their health and medical programs is very large. The equipment is very expensive.
Is it?
And then you also have the staffing issues to consider with that, because to, you would need, for a full-time teacher, you'd need 150-some students to want to take that as an elective in that particular site. Each of our courses is very specialized, so you can't teach dental and health and medical. You can't teach pharmacy tech and licensed practical nursing. So, they're very specialized, and finding staff is very difficult because those are high-paying jobs. And so, for people to want to come and teach on a teacher's salary is something that we find challenging. So, that's why we've kept those at the academies and expanded some of those programs.
And they're marvelous programs. I, and that's, you've anticipated my question as to whether they would go into the base schools, but it sounds like we really need the, the space and the expertise, both.
We are looking for other options. For instance, our informatics class that will start in the fall will be across with the red, not. the Red, not the Red Cross Building, at the Inova Building, right across the parking lot from you in the fall, so we'll be sharing space with them and working in the Inova Training Facility to teach our informatics class, and that's a grant with Inova and the Claude Moore Foundation. So we're looking for off-site opportunities for students to be able to do that, but it's very difficult, as I said, to try to find the equipment, the space, the staff, all at one location to make that happen.
That's great. I have one go back from Mrs. Strauss.
Yes, thinking when we had to resolve the budget for next year and some of the cuts that we had to endure, I know that in some of our own FCPS professional production staff, I know that we're losing some positions, wondering whether or not the TV production that we have in CTE, particularly, you know, filming student work, student productions and things like that, whether or not the students can pick up some of the things that the adult professionals may have to drop, because we have the equipment.
There's a potential to do that. It's challenging with student schedules and, and staffing those, the students to go out and do that, as well as making sure that it fits within the curriculum of when the production is and where the students are in their curriculum at that point in time, but that's certainly something we have done in the past.
Good. We'll talk about that. Thanks.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Excellent report. We appreciate it, and again, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
And with that, I am going to read the motion to convene a closed meeting. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, protect the privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A4; two, discuss and consider disciplinary matters concerning two students pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia; three, consult with legal counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia regarding a contract matter; and four, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia, specifically vehicle safety measures. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Palchek, seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? That is unanimous, and we are now in closed meeting.